Meeting in Swan Plan Commission. It is six thirty-six on the May third.
No, working June.
Oh, I'm sorry, wrong paper. On June fourteenth nineteen hundred and twenty-three, thank you. Okay, first item of business is agenda review. It looks pretty simple. We will have to work instead of meeting date, maybe we should check with everybody, make sure that next time for the.
You do want to set one for, I've been hired to help you guys do bylaw rewrite and I want to get.
Yes.
Get the ball rolling.
Get these back on. What else can I try to add? I also never scheduled a meeting for this week because it's every single graduation.
And we look forward to working with you again.
I'm excited.
Okay, so then we come down to review the minutes of May fifth. Anybody have any questions or problems or issues?
Make a motion to approve the May fifth meeting minutes as written.
I second the motion.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the minutes of May fifth two thousand and twenty-three. All in favor, sing the prayer by saying aye.
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 Close, motion parrot.
Right.
Cross.
Those ones are short and sweet.
Those minutes?
Ready to.
Those ones are, some of them are long.
Put up the select board minutes.
Did you just pass that?
You like them?
Okay.
Put some stuff in there, so.
Alright.
Mark the year.
I think we come to number four. I would like to see a motion to adjourn item number four. To schedule that for a month from now or a month and a half from now or something.
The public hearing?
Yeah.
No, the public hearing is now.
No, that's now.
Has to be now.
Has to be now.
Why does it have to be?
Because we have to have this done by August, there's a timeline.
There's a timeline.
Yeah, okay.
So if we have the public hearing a month from now, the select board can't pass it for sixty days from then.
Okay.
So then it won't pass till September.
Okay, alright, alright. I buy it.
Well, there's been thirty day notice.
But I would like to at least something that, I mean, we had nobody here tonight.
And that's not gonna change anything.
I, I realize, well, I, I realize that, that some, some people, I don't, I didn't expect the, the room to be overflowing with people. But I expected a few people to be here. And they're not.
And they're probably not gonna be at the next one if we reschedule it.
Probably not either.
So, so Ed, they have an opportunity to come to a public meeting in, at the select board in July and then there has to be another public meeting at the select board in August.
Okay.
So there's three total public meetings according to statutory law.
Okay.
So that's, we do that, so people have the opportunity to give comment. They also have had two public meetings this fall and monthly public meetings as we've been drafting this to give feedback.
Alright.
Select Board and, and when Cory?
We have.
July eighteenth and August twenty-second for the select board.
July eighteenth?
And their meetings are at six now and August twenty-second.
Other Tuesdays?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Sorry, my phone.
The twenty-second is an added on, meaning it's just for this.
The.
They've added that meaning just.
August twenty-second?
Right, it's just for the last public hearing for the select board.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so we, we gotta get.
The third day.
We gotta get the word out that.
Hours before this.
Well, there's, okay, we've had this discussion.
I know we have.
We've posted it there, we've put it in the paper.
There's nothing controversial for no one's gonna show up.
We've.
Put it on the sign for the digital.
We posted at the library, we posted all over town. What else can we do?
I would like to see, as soon as we have a finished copy of it, a copy go to the newsroom at the St. Olivers Messenger.
To, to print?
Right.
To print in the paper?
No, 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 no. Whatever they wanna do as a news article. They might write an article, Swan updates its town plan. As a news article, I'm not writing, nothing that, as we're not charging or paying for anything to be printed.
So Ed, Ed, I'll, so I'm working on a project, a two billion dollar project in Northeast Kingdom that is going through seven communities and there hasn't been a single newspaper article written about it. Like, that's just a state of Vermont.
I, I know, but, but I, I just wanted to see if the people have an opportunity to come in here.
No, I get it.
I get it too, but they've got plenty of opportunity.
And, and I know we don't, and I think if we sent one to the, a copy of your final plan to the messenger, to the courier, and to.
And, and be. And because the public's listening, a copy has already been sent to regional planning, to the state of Vermont, and to every neighboring community pursuant to VS, twenty-four VSA. So these are, we have followed every process, the only thing we don't have is people in attendance.
I, I just would like to reach out the second time here.
Cory?
Give them the opportunity to stretch to one of these and by getting the copy of our report as it is to the messenger, to the courier, and to this young man's organization. Maybe we can get some publicity on their news show or Richard Copper's wife and then through the messenger and the courier. I would think they would read it and then they might have some questions for us.
Highgate is currently going through a town plan rewrite, correct?
They just did theirs.
They just did ours. And what, did, did we read any articles about them or was there anything written in the messenger?
I've read a couple in the county courier.
About their town plan rewrite or about the expansion of.
The expansion of, yeah.
That's not the town plan rewrite. So currently, this is the nature of what we do, right?
Yeah.
This is, this is not a wind, you know, facility going in on Swan Hills. This is not some of the other stuff that, that has come before us. People have been given notice, there's two more meetings after this and, and it's not even just the people that are not involved, the people that are involved in our community as, as bad as it is to say, aren't even gonna read this, right? I mean, realistically, we've gone to the select board numerous times with things and it's, I'm not trying to bash the select board, but they've opened up what we brought in the day of and they've been like, well, what is this? Well, you've had two other meetings to read it, they didn't even read it, so.
It's, it's, the problem with planning process in Vermont is they have made these plans, I looked in other communities and even here you'll see the recommendations for regional plan will probably add ten pages to ours of, of fluff.
Yeah.
You know, and, and so they make them so long, they actually become ineffective.
Also. Yep.
Like, a plan is only good as those executing it.
Okay.
And, and it's not those, but it's just, they have you address so many things that you won't, so like, I just think they become such a, I mean, tonight we're going through regional planning, looked at it, there are twenty-six check marks they wanted to make, they checked nineteen of them off. We're gonna address six of them tonight and we're gonna move on and and, and to your, to their point, we, there is nothing in this new town plan that's really a departure and policy from the community. There are things to shore up on, I think we have tightened the language, I think we've made it more readable, more user friendly. Um, the implementation chapter, I think it's better because we have that, that table. Um, I know when we get to bylaws, first thing I'm gonna do is pull out everything that we said we'd address in the bylaws of the town plan and we'll address those as a kind of starting point as we do that work. And then the rest of it's up to, you know, the community to implement. I, I hear your point, but I just, I think we're, I mean, again, we, we've had people, I've been in a lot of public meetings in the last month, I, I was just saying, I've been to seven communities, you know, we've had people show up to those, but those were a big project coming into the community that was, you know.
Those were similar to the select board meeting on the other night where everybody was in attendance because of the MVU sidewalk, you know, there, there was something on the agenda.
It's a good turnout.
That, I was shocked to see the list of names when I read those meeting minutes earlier today. So, not shocked, but I was gladly surprised to see those. So, the point is too, I would hope, it's not that this town plan doesn't have any impact, because it does have impact, but it's so far out compared to our bylaws. Now, if this was a meeting on a complete change of our bylaws, if this was a meeting and there was nobody in the crowd, I'd be like, oh crap, like, we gotta do something because those have daily impacts on what they do every day.
Yeah, and this, that's.
But even then, you, you'll be surprised, we, when we did the bylaws at the town of St. Olivers, I think we had the whole process, seven people show up.
The only people that show up are the people that want those bylaws.
That almost changed.
Okay, you convinced me.
I mean, it's, it's, it's more of a state of work. The collective is not, I don't think our work and, and our current town plan expires in the fall, so we don't wanna delay it.
We, yeah, we gotta set a timeline.
We'll be at town.
The reason why I brought all this stuff here with me tonight, I dug it out of the, my closet at home. This is last year's plan. This is this year's plan. Cory, you did a good job.
Yeah.
You did what you, we asked you to do and I wanna make it, that a point that you, you did a nice job with this, instead of two hundred some odd pages, we're down to about fifty pages. I think that's quite an accomplishment that we were able to.
And, and I think in that, I don't think we got rid of anything with meat and potatoes, if you will, like, I don't think we cut.
It was fluff, it wasn't, I don't wanna call it fluff, but.
I think we cut a lot of.
Maybe small, smaller.
Yeah, I think we were just much more direct, but I think we kept, I actually think we strengthened it and probably in a lot of spots, so.
There was a lot of, you know, repeat, repetition in there too, there was a lot of regurgitation. It wasn't that it was the same exact verbiage, but it was regurgitated. The complete paragraph prior was regurgitated as a new one and it was, it was a lot of that type of stuff, so, yeah.
So you need to open the public hearing.
Huh?
We gotta open the public.
You need to open the public hearing.
Alright, yes. It's coming up next. Alright, so at this point, we will have a public hearing on the two thousand and twenty-three Swan Municipal Plan. Is there anyone who would like to comment on this plan?
I make a motion to open the public hearing.
I second the motion.
Motion is made, second, open the two thousand and twenty-three Municipal, Swan Municipal Public Plan Hearing.
I, I've got a presentation to put to, put together that kind of overview of, of the high level goals that we did, we can certainly go through the plan um, if you want us to, and then I've got the recommendations from regional planning um, to make with, with adjustment language that you could adopt tonight.
I would say let's do what we've gotta do and.
Yeah.
So. Here to read.
So here. We read the plan.
Yeah, I got the town and village Swan Municipal Plan, so again, just to reiterate, the town plan's a, a document essential to defining implementing a community's vision. Uh, the plan provides a framework for obtaining community aspirations through public investments, land use regulations and other implementation programs such as state designated downtown or village center, uh, business improvement districts or land conservation. Um, this is also to qualify for state grants to fund improvements or receive specialized technical assistance, the importance of it. What are municipal plans used for, long-term guide, a base for decision-making, community programs and taxpayer investments. An action plan that identifies implementation steps, a basis for municipal regulations, a source of information, source for strategic planning and studies, a tool for coordination, a source for community standards and regulatory proceedings, Act two fifty, and a source to obtain access to state and federal grant dollars. Uh, it's an eight-year plan, but the goal is to look twenty years down the road. Um, the priorities of this planning commission when we set out almost a year ago was address and strengthen the following topics, recreation, senior housing and the Southern Growth District. Uh, it was, uh, putting, you know, kind of your thoughts into your words here, shorten and make the municipal plan more readable and user friendly. Ensure it's compliant with state and regional planning requirements and provide opportunity for community input. We've done a community survey, we've done outreach to Abenaki leaders, we've had two public forums, uh, regularly scheduled public planning commission meetings and statutory required meetings, including this one, which is the statutorily required, uh, public hearing at the planning commission level, which will be followed by two public hearings, both worn thirty days apart um, to give plenty of notice to the public to come in. And, and honestly, Ed, that might be part of the problem, maybe the states should address thirty day warnings. You tell me about something thirty days from now, I'm gonna forget about it in fourteen days. Maybe the warning, maybe.
I'm gonna forget about it in four.
Maybe the warning period's too long.
Oh, don't worry, you'll get a reminder.
I know.
So, um, kinda just diving in since there's no one here to ask questions, the feedback from Northwest Regional Planning. Um, they wanted us to add the following maps, uh, designated village center map, chapter three, a map of habitat blocks, uh, an updated transportation one, which I don't really think was needed, but they wanted us to list the Highgate Airport, you know, we mentioned it nine times in, in the, the plan that we sent over to them and.
No, it's not in St. Olivers.
Yeah, but they wanted the closest airport, so I mentioned Highgate, I also put in, uh, Patrick Leahy Burlington International and Pottsburg because that's where people are really gonna probably fly out of, it's their closest ones. And then I, I mentioned, the railroads also mentioned eight times, but they wanted it listed specifically, so, um, we have language in there to address. Utilities map that had the schools on it, we didn't have a map of the schools, so okay, we'll add the schools to that map and then they want a river corridor overlay. Um, they also want to add to an appendix, which fair enough, we, they, they said we could put it in the plan or in appendix, I think it should go in the appendix, the zoning district, uh, purpose statements. I was talking to you before the meeting, I, I think the frustration that is we're gonna rewrite our.
Mend those.
Mend those in, in a few months, so it's like, I don't know why they go in the plan versus like, you have your regulatory piece, uh. So here's where we kinda get in, those I don't see as anything controversial that don't really need language, that's just, you gotta say, yeah, make those changes. They want us to add a statement of how the village designation furthers the goal of the municipal plan. We, how we worded it, uh, and I thought we achieved this, was to enhance vitality of Swan's historic downtown and chart a path for future investments and we literally have the policy, maintain village center designation, encourage violent landowners to utilize benefits of the program. I thought that addressed that, but they wanted a little more clarity, so I think we could add the following sentence, you know, at the beginning of the chapter, we had a couple paragraphs of why we're doing what we're doing in that chapter. Add Swan maintains a designated village center which can help provide technical expertise and resources to municipality to further the desire to keep future growth concentrated.
Yep.
Just a paragraph.
What about the people that don't want the village to exist separately?
Well, that's, that's not, um, the designated village center is not a municipal function, it's, it's a state.
Almost like a historic district.
It's, it's, or like a growth center, it's a way to get special tax opportunities and grant opportunities. Like the town of St. Olivers has one down at the Bay Area, is a historic village and.
Yeah.
So. Does anyone have any concerns that language fine just to add in?
Yeah.
As is, the other one was forest fragmentation. We had goal three point four, to live with respect for land, make wise and efficient use of it and preserve the town's working landscape policy, community infrastructure shall be planned to minimize development pressures on agricultural and forest land. Thought we addressed it, uh, there, um, but they want us to add the following statement, which we could add in chapter three or four. Maintaining large unfragmented forest areas is critical to the supporting, to supporting large animal species and habitat functions. Over time, even low density rural development in roads can be swanton. Uh. Can threaten the health function value of these habitats, much of Swan's forest habitat blocks is protected as part of the Mississippi National Wildlife Refuge, our priority habitat, uh, blocks are shown in the map that new map will put in and just leave it at that. So we addressed it without saying anything that I think could hurt the town in an Act two fifty hearing. Feedback, list the nearest airport and railroad facilities, so um, I would think we could add this paragraph at the opening of chapter four, new fourth paragraph, I just need to figure out how many miles of rail road we have. Um, and it's number of miles of rail runs through the town of Swanton, St. Olivers is the northernmost stop for passenger rail in western Vermont, Swanton would be supportive of passenger rail returning to Montreal. Uh, the Franklin County State Airport is located just northeast of the community in Highgate, although, that should be many, not mine. Many passenger flights take place from the Patrick Leahy Burlington International Airport and Pottsburg International Airport. So I listed, I want to let them be on there to just listed what people are actually gonna use for travel.
Didn't they name it after him?
The federal government did it, cuz it's a.
So he, he did it after himself.
Yeah, he got it like, put in a, they got it in a federal bill to name.
Just like he, uh, got the fifth great lake.
Yeah.
Or sixth.
Sixth great lake, so he got it and some funding, so it's now the Patrick Leahy Burlington International Airport.
Did you know that's why they got the extra great lake list for funding?
Yep.
Nothing to do with size.
And so, uh, add a statement on air quality and forest fragmentation, so we already kind of addressed that earlier. Um. What I would do is at this beginning of chapter five, air quality is generally high throughout Vermont, especially in rural communities such as Swanton, motor vehicles are the largest source of air pollution in Vermont, which can create localized areas of poor air quality when traffic is congested. Air quality can also be impacted by weather patterns which carry pollutants from other areas such as the twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-three wildfires in southern Canada impacted air quality across northern Vermont, that just happened last week. I stole this language from the Highgate rewrite that regional planning did, so I feel like it will pass their muster now and if they don't like it, I can say, you just did in Highgate. Um, except they had twenty twenty-one wildfires, so I, I thought, aha, I'll be more, well, updated to last week. Um, and then an edit goal five point two to say, protect ecological and resource sensitive areas such as wetlands, fragile slopes. We had, um, all of it, so basically, um, add in, um. So we were gonna, to say that and then add policy discourage fragmentation, important habitat blocks and encourage cluster development. Add goal five twenty-eight, protect the health of the residents of Swan by ensuring good air quality. Add policy ensure new development does not have a detrimental effect on air quality. Kind of, you know, saying in that way you can address there. We trust water quality and some of the other ones that we know the community really cares about, not that air isn't, but it hasn't been an issue, so.
Yep.
So we're making sure.
Why is why is there?
Address. Um, regional planning, uh, asked us to specifically address manufactured housing, even though the regional, current regional plan that we're in this year does not say manufactured housing once or mobile housing once. So I was, I don't know why it needed specific, but we could add in here, goal two six point six, use zoning and build review to support housing. Uh, policy, review zoning and subdivision bylaws to ensure that manufactured housing does not face unnecessary barriers to development. This is what I would add to that. So that would be that one. Uh, they had other suggestions to frame, uh, to strengthen, um, they wanted us to, we didn't have to do, this is just things they could do. Reference flood planning by referencing the twenty twenty-one local hazard mitigation plan, like that sentence saying the town's been on local hazard, you know, twenty twenty-one, you know, they did that. They wanted to do a data table to calculate affordability of homeownership. I think that's kind of those areas we agreed to kind of leave out just because that's that, that's moving target for an eight-year plan right now. Add data unemployment and poverty, there's pretty low unemployment across the state of Vermont anyways, I don't think it really, we're in a weird spot. We can add it, but it'll just take up area and, and make the plan longer and then add explanation of flooding and for to viral erosion, but I don't think it's a, a huge deal there. But these we don't have to address. They were just suggested we have to, they wanted us to address it, so it's up to you guys if you want me to add anything on that front. Yeah.
I'm just curious as to why they think that would strengthen our plan and what it would be used for.
Well, I think cuz like you'd say, if we have abnormally high unemployment, I think you'd say we need this grant money to help
To.
Help the community that had high unemployment.
Yep.
Yeah, that.
We don't right now and, and quite honestly, the people who probably aren't working in this economy are the ones who don't want to work, you know, for, and they might be out of a job temporarily, but there's, you know.
There's work out there if they wanna.
Yeah, there's a lot of work out there right now, so it's just, maybe at, in eight years, if the community and the economy's in a different place, you wanna address that a little more tightly, but like right now, it's not.
Did we not, um.
We have updated tables, like I can fill them in, it just.
But did we not reference the hazard mitigation plan?
We didn't specifically call up the twenty twenty-one hazard, so I can add a sentence in the.
Just add that, please.
Add that sentence. Yep, I can do that. Um, and that's it. Yeah, they didn't, there wasn't a ton of, they weren't.
So it's not gonna.
I read their edits and I was like, I knew they'd have some, I wasn't like, oh, this is off, I was like, I don't know, so what's the.
I mean, the maps are gonna add.
I thought they were gonna, I thought we were gonna be looking at book, you know, from them.
Yeah, so I was, so I think it speaks to the work that you guys did, they wanna add a few maps. They want us to add a few clarifying sentences. The maps will take up the space, adding five maps will probably take up two, three pages and then this will take up another couple, but.
It's not a big deal.
I think, I think overall.
It's legitimate, so, you know, it's pretty legitimate.
Yeah.
So. So we can do that, it, so, I mean, where I would do it if. Do you have any feedback on the new town plan?
Well, I just walked in, so I guess I missed the whole first part.
There's two more meetings, Sean.
Yeah.
Just so you know.
Um, anything that, and I apologize if I'm reiterating or going in a whole different topic. Anything that brings dense development is gonna help us for sure.
Yeah, so we, we talked about the importance of density, um, and focusing growth, specifically housing in our village area as well as the Southern Growth District around.
Which just doesn't seem to be getting any legs unfortunately. Um, but looking at the big picture stuff, what we've got right now is a massive push to the countryside. The reason that you're seeing on the national news, people saying, hey, look, housing's slowing down and where's your, not here. And it's not rural America, it's in the cities that that's starting to happen. Why? Because there's a massive push out of the cities, multiple reasons for that. People aren't feeling safe the way they did before, but one of the biggest ones right now is that because of the COVID push, people were starting to work from home and there's so many that are not going back now. And now they're actually able to take those dollars that they made in the cities and bring them to the countryside. And, and even Burlington, right, it doesn't even need to be the big ones, it could be local cities that, they don't need to be next to my office anymore. I don't need to be in St. Olivers, I don't need to be in Burlington to be close anymore, I actually can live in Bakersfield now and still do the same job, cuz I, I don't go to work at all anymore or, or a day a week. And so that's a huge push to the countryside, what's gonna end up happening around America is the fact that they're gonna just take these easy developments. Why am I gonna make it difficult in a village center for me if it's expensive, it's hard to do? I gotta deal with all these headaches on there, why tear down a building when I've got vacant land out here? So I can take vacant, start from new and talk to a farmer or a large landowner and do a development out there. But that just then tears apart our countryside, right? It's for the wildlife or all that, you know, we can go on all the reasons for that. The dense development is the best option for us and anything that can kind of enhance that is gonna help us in that process. And I actually had a case study to kind of look at, um, if time permits, down the road here, to look at a scenario where you know, some development isn't able to be done right now with our current town plan, but it seems like it, maybe it should be, so.
And where, so you know, the select board just approved, um, a large sum of our funds for us to do a, a whole um, town, uh, bylaw rewrite, so after these next two meetings we have, which will end in August, are we gonna start on bylaws before August, is that your plan?
Yeah, I'm like, I, I mean, I would start. I'm, I was under contract June one, so I'm, I'm ready to start as soon as you guys are.
So. So our, our next, our next, um, project is gonna be your, our bylaw rewrite.
Which is where we'll, so the town plan won't address what can't be built today, what it'll say is, we, so we'll use the town plan when we update the bylaws and say, and we do say it multiple times, you're encouraged.
Density.
Density, there's a new state law we have to comply with. Um, we will comply with it in the right spirit of law, there are chatter among communities on how to skirt this new law, uh, including a community, two communities south of here, um, where, uh, this, the governor's office is gonna be putting out a statement in the next month of what it actually, what the law actually means. Um, and so.
What's the gist of it, do you know?
So basically, anywhere there's water in sewer, wherever you allow a single family home, you have to allow a minimum of four units. Um, it also allows for, uh, a density bonus of just basically five point six units for six units is, I think, the, the intent. Um, if, if you keep it affordable and the definition affordable is not like a, a program or anything that you have to sign up for, but it's, um, you have to keep rents, I think for St. Olivers, like seven, below seventeen twenty-five for a two bedroom, so like, a little bit high, it's big cuz we're in Burlington market.
Yeah, our, our section eight numbers here, what section eight will pay is equivalent to Burlington.
Yeah.
Franklin County is.
So si- similar, so we, so up here, it'll be, as long as your rents are below that Burlington calculation, you can get that, that density. Um, I also think if you have, uh, downtown or, I'll, I'll have to look in, I think there's some ways to get around some Act two fifty stuff in downtowns. So again, encouraging more development in a downtown, um, they didn't go after all the active, they're supposed to, they're supposed to get rid of the ten and ten rule.
Yeah, that was the one everybody's after.
Yeah, they didn't get, they didn't get rid of it.
They can get there.
Um, but, uh.
That was the big hope, that's, that's what everybody's.
Yeah, that was the one.
Biggest buzz.
Uh, but you will, um, I think the also is, is where there's municipal water in sewer, I don't think you can require minimum lot size any bigger than one-fifth of an acre. So.
We're at an eighth of an acre now, right?
Yeah.
Is it something like that?
I don't know right now.
I believe so, yeah.
But a lot of towns like, um, again, like cities in Olivers requires about ninety-five hundred square feet for a single family. Will they, ninety-five hundred for a single family home and say, sitting up in city? Well, that's bigger than an eighth of an acre.
Yeah, yeah.
And so even getting them to crunch down, um.
Yeah, that's almost a quarter, frankly, that is a quarter, just under, you know, two tenths, two point two.
Yeah.
So, um, yeah.
So there, those, those are, doesn't mean we have to stop it, that's just the minimum
threshold.
standard that every town has to get to by December twenty twenty-four. They're giving towns time to update their bylaws and and my guess is the legislature will have clarifying language sometime next year that
Really does account.
That really clarifies, cuz South Burlington's been throwing a fit about it, this law, cities in a lot of communities, cuz they don't want.
The density.
They don't want the large homes cut up into four apartments, um, but the state effectively wants it, um. You know, because that's how you put, you know, the state also. You know because that's how you put you know the state also passed a lot of fifty percent of land in the state by twenty fifty needs to be in conservation. So the only way you make that number work with the growing population.
Density annoying.
It's density so and that's always been the public policy position of the state of Vermont.
The state or each community state as a whole?
State as a whole. So you get a town like Brunswick or something that ninety nine percent of it is.
How much of Swan what was the Swan?
Swan's.
Forty five?
Yeah, Swan's in the forty so Swan's already practically there.
But.
That's why I asked.
But you know it is it is.
So.
Yeah.
I guess that's separate of our bylaw rewrite and not if if Sean or anybody else has anything more for the town plan rewrite I should say I think are we should we think about closing that public hearing?
Yeah, we can.
We have to make a motion to adopt it right?
We can do that outside of the public hearing I think.
We can.
Or we can do it in the public hearing. If you you wanna give a motion to adopt with the changes.
Per yeah oh I'd like to make a motion to adopt the um Swan town plan rewrite with the amendments and changes proposed by um Cory parent based upon uh feedback from regional planning.
And say send it to the select board.
And to send it to the select board for them to review.
Is there a second?
Yep.
Oh, second.
Any comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no yeah I just have it motion is carried.
Like to make a motion to close the public hearing of the twenty twenty three Swan Minnesota plan rewrite.
Is there a second?
Yes, I second.
Motion is made and seconded to close the public hearing section of the this evening's meeting.
Uh yeah, the public hearing we stopped our planning commission.
Yeah, we yeah we can close in just a public hearing.
Any comments by anyone? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no yeah I just have it motion carries. Amen. It's been a long time.
Yeah.
And we didn't under a year.
Yeah, we cruised.
But I I just looked at that on my desk and I said God how did we?
But that that's the larger problem with the planning process when communities have a two hundred page plan.
Yeah.
They don't do anything with it it just takes up we we turned from two hundred pages into about forty.
Yeah, nice.
So they. A lot of repetition.
People might read it.
Taking out the the block I mean and it probably has all the potatoes that it need that that one had.
A lot of vegetation.
Sure.
There was there was stuff said the same way in like five different units it'd be like here and then there and then there and then there and Cory wait.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's bringing it together.
And we just yeah.
Okay.
So did we wanna set a meeting date for?
I I want to cuz I I wanna start getting rolling on that cuz that that's gonna take another year I mean then ten months to a year I mean it that that's a process in its own.
By law.
Right.
Yep.
I wanna treat that very similar to how what we did here um because we've worked together for a year now I think you kind of get my style or last time we took a month you know it kind of like figure out styles. I wanna dive in start looking at the first couple of chapters maybe the first night when we really dive into it I'll pull the things out of the plan we wanna make sure we address so we go through and we're immediately starting to pick things off of our our town plan. Um I'll try to get guidance as soon as I can from the state and regional planning on on uh the new housing bill and anything there and then I think we um I think we really start to just pick you know one or two chapters a month and.
Yeah.
Just work our way.
Have you read any of it yet?
I skimmed it I haven't. Duh like I w- will you know.
Cuz I think that from I haven't read page for page but what I have read there's a lot of repetitive stuff in there to pass.
Well, there's a lot of contradiction too it's that's something it's yeah.
Yeah.
Oh I.
Yeah, and I'm assuming Amy will have on this might give a you'll have a list of things we need to address.
A list.
We do a list.
I have a list, yes.
Um because.
We've been always we've been talking.
Talked about for. So the so we'll address those as we get to them in each chapter like I know we'll have a ton of them but like this I just wanna like
Yeah.
we did I did this at the town council where we wrote there so we went word for word like we did here in that way like cuz a lot sometimes you do a quick update and you throw five six things in and then up we're good and that just.
Actually the biggest thing with ours is it needs fifty things taken out.
So are we talking about?
That uh contradicted repeated.
I'm thinking June I was thinking June twenty eighth but do we wanna go to July?
July, June?
I agree June twenty eighth.
I I'm just the next week the fourth of July then after that we're getting close to our other meeting right Wednesday or the meeting.
Yeah, cuz then we can do one at the end of July too cuz you.
July eighteenth.
So.
July eighteenth is July.
So you wanna do June twenty eighth?
No, we're July July eighteenth oh because it's a select board.
July eighteenth is July.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's why it's a Tuesday um.
Right there right now.
So we could do the twelfth or the twenty eighth I'm I just I know that we could.
The twelfth or the twenty eighth of what you mean the twenty eighth of June?
Why don't we do both?
June or the twelfth of July I guess I'll leave.
Yeah, I mean I think you could do both so we can really kind of get into and then we won't meet again till August.
Wednesday.
Yeah.
Yeah, tell my wife that.
Well, you're suggesting this.
What do you mean you have to have a July meeting anyways?
No and or he said both.
Yeah, we have to have a July meeting anyways.
Um.
Yeah, they have a July meeting anyway.
Then let's go the twelfth.
Cuz it's eighteen.
June twelfth.
July twelfth.
Uh July twelfth.
Either way I'll have start.
Or you can do the twenty eighth too.
June twenty eighth and July twelfth.
Well, I'll well I'll ask for is if Amy can start to send me the list cuz you guys are paying me in June to work on the bylaws so I wanna get some work done then like.
If she's got a list of stuff send it to him and let him hammer it out.
Okay.
And then just start to flag like what I'll do is go through and flag areas so that when we get.
Okay.
Just like what you just you already did you had it highlighted we we sat down and hammered.
So no twenty?
No.
No, but I'll start working on it so we.
No twenty eighth?
But.
No, July twelfth.
Yeah.
Okay, July twelfth and send Cory.
Your list of things you wanna address I'll have a list from here obviously be very similar I'll highlight anything I add I'll show you the strike two marks anything I think you need to cross out.
Wow. Change.
And then it will go to the third Wednesday of each month?
Whatever you guys wanna do your typical meeting is I know we kind of.
Typically.
So we're gonna do July twelfth.
For a little bit of a.
At that um.
W- Wednesday?
Yeah.
Wednesday, July.
It's not the same.
And then we would go to.
So July.
Well, we do the fifth but that's not week I'm gonna be.
The fifth of what?
Sure if we might.
I'm on vacation.
I'm on vacation.
That's what I mean I knew that week was so.
Isn't you just come back from vacation?
Do we wanna?
Yeah, and I'm on another one in August.
So do we wanna do uh do we wanna do July twelfth and twenty sixth knowing we already have a meeting on the eighteenth?
Have fun.
You wanna plan on that now?
Two meetings in July?
Three.
Three meetings?
Right.
No.
Well, we all don't go to the eighteenth.
So I let's let's.
You don't have three right remember who has to go to all of them.
The.
You guys need payphone we do.
Doesn't matter still uh.
I have children that need their mother.
So for us I do like the new website.
Yeah, I need one that way.
She uh.
So July twelfth.
You know my wife.
I think for us to say they have twenty meetings.
Alright, July six thirty? Six thirty?
Okay.
Yeah.
Six okay.
So what do we say July twelfth?
So would you decide to have? July twelfth six thirty.
On July twelfth eighteenth and twenty second?
We'll cut out July.
Alright.
That same time for all of those.
I didn't think we listed on twenty sixth.
Let's see if we can schedule as many meetings you want I just won't be at all probably.
So let's look at so our bylaws are a hundred eighty five pages and we're not gonna be able to cut out a hundred of them like that.
Is this is this like the GPS when you go on a trip like I'm trying to beat I'm trying to beat the arrival time Cory's like a hundred eighty pages we're going to one twenty.
I'm good like I'm good I'm good.
Um so we got so chat you guys come articles but I just wanna look at how many chapters.
So are we having a meeting in August besides the twenty second?
Yeah.
It's good July.
Are we having the sixteen?
All like six or six thirty?
Six thirty.
Six thirty.
Are we having one the sixteenth of August?
Uh it's not in my schedule no I no.
I'm sure.
No, twenty second.
So I I think we so my just general thought and some of these are longer than others is we're gonna really hit a chapter two a month for about six months. And then you know you'll kind of do your final one month seven and then we got two or three months again of public hearings and passage and that basically gets us to.
Yeah.
But those are only worn fifteen days, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we can.
Slam those a little harder.
Right.
But I so just so you guys are like I told Brian to count on Swan like I can get this like we budgeted ten months so I'm gonna try to get them.
Ten months. We're doing ten months.
Ten months to get through.
Can we do so do you guys wanna shoot for August sixteenth then or typical would be our typical meeting?
There.
Yeah.
August sixteenth?
Six thirty.
But then you have the eighteenth.
Twenty second.
Twenty second, yeah.
That's fine.
Do you have this as a word document?
So is the eighth and the twenty second or the eighteen?
So the the twenty second is the select board public hearing for the town plan.
Gotcha so.
Word.
The eighteenth is your meeting. To review.
The sixteenth.
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth the Wednesday Wednesday before.
Yeah.
Okay, um so the sixteenth right sixteen?
Yeah.
August sixteenth.
Yeah.
And then the twenty second's the final meeting Sean for the select board to stamp the town plan.
Gotcha.
So yeah, the first two chapters will be pretty the first one was just like all the statutory language required it will give us the authority to do it that'll be a.
That's all boilerplate that you're not gonna touch.
Yeah, well we'll touch some of it second one is gonna be more we're gonna get into district boundaries and districts that'll take some time.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can put those other two in my.
Can can you let us know?
So the July twelfth, July eighteenth, August sixteenth and the twenty second.
Let's say a few weeks ahead of each one of his dates.
Yeah.
You're killing me.
Which sections you intend to look at which zones.
You gotta be you gotta be there on the six.
You intend to look at.
They're on all of them.
Anyway.
So that way.
Yeah, be sure and select board.
What you are.
Right.
If somebody would like to go out and ride those streets or roads. Uh versus the long lake shore I haven't ridden the.
I would I would do that now because chapter two is is the various districts.
Districts.
I would um.
Do your homework now.
We will we will probably address that and cuz that's such a long one that'll be the second meeting in July.
Okay.
Twelfth will probably just go over general flags we'll go over the town plans up and probably chapter one this since we're meeting twice that month. Chapter two will probably be one of our biggest.
Yeah.
Discussion and well we can always come back to them but this is like where what's permitted what's conditional.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Works initially, right.
Do we really need these two districts are they really basically the same thing and can we merge you know like.
We're only meeting once as well.
The the other reason.
I thought we were meeting twice.
I asked.
Well, we're.
Second one's the town plan.
Select board.
Oh yeah, that's fine alright.
I just would like to to know that way if anybody wanted to go out on an afternoon before or Sunday afternoon.
But but like right here.
And ride those districts.
Like we're gonna have to adjust this like three acres you can't have three acre minimum lots in this anymore under the new state law.
Not in the that's the recreation conservation.
That'd be French show.
It's gonna be anywhere anywhere you allow housing is gonna have to be anywhere. So we're gonna have to do some of that.
Can that be proactive really?
We can do that as soon as you want the state just says it has to be done by December twenty fourth.
Well, we're gonna make the changes now we're on we're not gonna be making changes after the fact.
Right, we're gonna we're gonna but by the time it gets implemented it's gonna be like May of next year or.
We're doing it now. That creates just way too much work for me.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not gonna do an interim bylaw we'll just address it.
Right.
There are certain things we don't actually have to do because state supersedes local that going to affect July one but even if our bylaws contradict it the state wins so.
Right.
So some of that stuff but I'll we'll pull that up because that'll be really important to realize because in these areas cuz I think it's one acre in every zone that as long as they're suitable soil types.
Okay.
So like those are basically I wanna get rid of the five acre stuff like in shelter we need five acres for the house up or charlotte.
Fairfield.
Fairfield sometime anymore.
So you you'll tell us which which zone.
Plan on chapters or articles one and two in July for our next meeting.
Articles one and two July.
Yeah, we're really.
And article two may slip into August but that'll be one of our longer.
One and two, okay.
Yeah, cuz we'll get to some of these some of these chapters at the end when we're talking about um.
So I guess I see you get some maps Sean so my assumption is is that's more by law related.
Like some of this stuff won't take up.
Yeah.
Not that it doesn't it's not that it doesn't matter I'm just I just can see the maps on the chair from here.
Yeah. Yeah, it's obviously in all the square footage of of impervious surface based off what we can allow for development I'm looking specifically at lost nations for Joe Gregor's property.
Right, you can't do anything because he's maxed out.
He's maxed out you won't have to have multiple maps here to look at I don't know if tonight's the night for that or another night but.
We wanna hear you out but all I think it's a good reason.
Yeah, but it's not that I'm here to look at them anyway.
Yeah.
And so you can see the concept is like.
When you do thirty like percent coverage?
It's the lot coverage.
Yeah.
Forty percent.
Impervious service now I think it might be thirty percent in that district I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we do have other districts that are is denser or more percentage potentially no it's thirty is kind of our max.
No. I think so, yes, and it's only in I don't have my bylaws but we can go over that at the next meeting.
Yeah, so uh just thinking out loud while I hear this if the lot size is potentially getting smaller we would potentially need to increase uh lot coverage.
So the state did give a bonus so basically.
In.
A percentage percentage is percentage.
Housing can go up higher the state's gonna override by one story whatever the local bylaw allows.
Correct.
True.
So you're never gonna catch that uh so if you love thirty feet and they do like an affordability thing they're gonna be able to go forty feet.
Right, well, and we did change the shoreline recreation from fifteen percent to twenty percent to be in line with the state if you remember.
Um.
Yep.
So we did increase that which which does help.
I was part of that.
Five percent helps.
Mm-hmm.
But so what district is this in? That would be uh uh TS travel.
It's right down the north river.
I know what it is but I don't know what it is.
No, is it the NC or NCL?
I don't know what that is pink there the color is pink whatever pink is so I'm just trying to think.
Hold on, let me go look. It's pink.
But that driveway is considered density?
It's that's the.
Lot C L.
Yeah, then there's lot coverage impervious.
Yeah. Impervious surface so.
Um no, I thought we defined it only if it's asphalt.
Pain. And that's what's kicking him in the ass is because Amy needs the parking.
That's not what the state says.
Pardon?
That's not what the state says.
Yeah, state impervious surface is any and they like gravel driveway is impervious.
Right.
But that wasn't how it used to be.
Right.
No.
Currently that's how it is now but it used to be.
Pavement.
And so if we take this scenario right there it's very difficult for anybody to develop anywhere in town beyond that little box that he's got right there and we're in trouble long term.
He doesn't wanna go up and he can't he can't go out.
If.
He can't he can't go up.
He can't he can't go up cuz he's wet all around the back the side.
What does that have to do with the rest of it?
No, I don't.
He he can't he can't go out because he also said that becomes a nightmare for dealing with people right you know.
Start building.
He can go out.
Yeah, up yeah.
He can't go out.
Yeah, well, not only that but he's also dealing with the the safety piece of it of people stealing guns if somebody's upstairs they you know the clerk's upstairs now and there's people rolling out the door he's like
Right. Right.
he's like there's a federal laws that I have to.
A year too.
Where I have to be within eyes you know like if you look at all the gun stores they're they're right there.
Throw it open.
There's reasons for that too you know they're designed that way it has to happen he said I that means I can't go upstairs and you know so for them.
Right.
Only two people.
And even at ours all one level right and there's a reason but most all the gun stores you see are one level unless they have the ability to stack two floors which they don't um so in this case.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is something we're gonna have to look at obviously.
So what's is it the is the? Cuz I'm thinking of other businesses down there that have like I mean I said I don't exactly where their lines are but like Coolangary has a hundred percent lot coverage.
Or.
Same with Swan same with Swan lumber.
Previously.
Well, I I gotta think like Barrett Ford.
Yes, that's what I mean.
I mean those were probably grandfather like like.
Well.
Is that why they're grandfathered in?
Previously.
Right, they were previous to.
Previous to zoning for probably Coolangary and Swan lumber like and probably Barrett's too like.
Right, right, right.
Sure.
Yeah. Uh do you see any places like that it's probably previous to zoning?
I mean with seventies right those. Those seventies right wasn't it zoning here in Swan so it was the seventies.
Ah yeah, I'm not sure.
Seventy one, yeah.
Yeah.
They've been around in Swan lumber, yeah.
All been there, yeah, it's all been there so it's and I mean this is where right now we're really hampering a guy's ability to run business in town.
Yeah, I agree with this.
And we don't wanna lose them.
We don't wanna lose them and I also wanna leave you know.
I agree with the the lot coverage stuff for housing but for businesses it doesn't make any sense to me.
I.
Right, that's exactly where I was gonna head with it I can understand for housing as much cuz we do wanna keep that residential feel in residential areas but if we're allowing commercial in that district.
Yeah.
And it is commercial it it seems as though they should be able to fall underneath a different guideline.
Do you know the other one that I don't understand that Mother Hubbard's is no way they meet that requirement and that's not a grandfathered in.
Uh their lots bigger than you think it.
It's only an acre it's an acre law. It's one acre and that's they they have to have three quarter coverage on that between the building and the lot.
Yeah.
And.
Wow, wow, and I guess as people build and when they get the permit.
That they have a whole heck of a lot there.
What they actually do is different.
We have no.
I'm not talking about the building but you know people pay all the time and they don't need permit so.
The. The driveway.
I got I got two cuts going on a route seven and my buddy that works for V-trans tells me every time it's like one day they're gonna make you pull that other cut out. We don't know when it went in but at some point they could ask you to do it type of thing so. That there I bet you their lots bigger than you think that building's not that doesn't have that big of a footprint.
But the driveway and stuff doesn't.
Were they not?
That building's the same size as.
Forty six forty eight hundred square feet I think is what it was.
They have a lot of pavement.
Yeah, that's it cuz the lot so the lot on the driveway side when you pull in it's the telephone pole when you pull in.
Yeah, yeah. Close. Yeah.
Yeah.
And it goes around.
Yeah.
So there's a lot.
Okay.
This this I think and I think we look at you got a good point there Oliver and to your point is looking at um.
Commercial space.
Use and maybe tying the lot coverage and or some of their restrictions if you will to the use right for commercial potentially having a little bit different because we wanna have that parking we wanna have that curb appeal if there's ways we know that in the backyard in this picture Clifford you know no for whatever you can see they've got quite a bit of open land there that's kind of making up for if we've got a neighbor that's a little bit more dense because that's residential so.
Not only that is the business is paying a high rate of taxes for laying this their building thing.
Not only that, is the business is paying a high rate of taxes for laying this, they're probably, it's 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 just like the sou- the southern growth district. You look at why they can't get any businesses there. How much is tract supply paying taxes for the subject system every year?
I bought the highest tax revenue apartment building from John like five years ago in Townland City. The highest tax dividend, like telling us with my deep back lawn, but they won't even build anything on it. And I go, grass is a pay rent.
Exactly. No, not even nickel.
No, that costs so much.
Nice, I guess it.
And 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 you have to mow it because it'll give you a tippy if it goes over eight inches.
Well, can, didn't the state deny them permit for a water along Route seventy-eight?
Yeah.
And hoping to go under Route seventy-eight somewhere around the.
I think there must already be a cover there or something because there is this.
I know.
It seems to me, I remember the state, there's some something about the state that denied them something down there. They wanted to under Route seventy-eight or something.
I don't know.
That whole line to town is swamped.
Web hole right there. It's all along the web. That's where you hear of a swamp? Don't order it on it.
Okay, farmer. Especially didn't say tiles.
Well, you do that after. But it's just something to look at. I I think that you're, you hit right on that with commercial versus residential. Maybe we consider it different because we're just gonna keep pushing away people.
Yeah. Yeah. Uses.
Well, especially, yeah, like in a business, this isn't a business that's out, you know, in the middle. It's basically in the village.
It's on the main drag.
Yeah.
It's on the main drag. If you look at what the rest of the town looks like, and obviously we know what the village looks like in comparison, but he's still in the village there. Um that is part of the village, you know, it's cuts off just past that Johnny Drive, so or Brooklyn Street technically.
I guess he wanted to do it, but another interesting thing he could do, like if you guys just stuck on, and this is being creative. He narrowed his entrance in to like a two lane instead of having that.
He doesn't have the depth.
He doesn't have enough parking, he doesn't really have enough parking down.
Yeah.
He doesn't have parking down.
They park along the street there.
They do. And if Ronnie Briar wasn't as laid back as he was, it'd be a whole different game, you know, so.
Hmm.
Um, you know, he he's a, he runs business.
That's another, that's a, that's another good point, though. I mean, I know just, you know, that's another business that you know, is gonna be looking for something within, they aren't gonna own that forever. And the next, you know,
Another.
if it's valleys or jollies, they they probably are not gonna try and work with that footprint that they have there now. And and I know just because personally, there's a couple of residences that are kinda all included in that lot, right? And it it all kinda comes in together, but you know, we gotta be thinking, I'm not saying that store is going anywhere today, but
That's right.
It's not, you know, so we gotta be thinking about how we can, you know, because that again is another prime real estate, like you know, in and out for for people that are that are driving through town, so.
Well, my opinion is we're making a push to, you know, grow Swan that if you're trying to grow your tax base, you're gonna grow your tax base a lot faster than business than you are with twenty houses.
Yeah.
So I had a chance, I'd rather have a hundred more businesses and no more houses than have a thousand more houses.
Because this business also use less services.
Yeah.
And a thriving community has both, you know, and so it's a matter of having space for both. And you think at some point, something's gonna happen with the corner Stanislosses got there now, so they're they're buying Gary Rice's properties also, so they're gonna extend onto that. Um that's all in the process too. They're buying both those buildings. And uh so they'll have that whole corner there. It'll be a pretty large chunk of land. Well, they may have posted already. I don't know if they have or not yet, but they will be. Um so so that whole corner is one more potential. Let's just look at a potential for down the road of a of a very large commercial project right there.
Especially with the RIVL lot, like those are all coming.
It's all coming together there, kind of, you know, so.
Yep.
Well, folks, I guess we're getting down near the end here.
Yep.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
We set our dates. Matter of course, comment. Any other that's concerned, do you?
You ready, Dave?
Amy, any other, nothing else for you?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second that motion.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Good night. Thank you for all being here.
You're welcome.